You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
To consider and if appropriate approve the Board of Selectment minutes of May 1st, 2024 and May 16th, 2024, which was a special meeting.
Move it.
Move a second. Any edits, corrections, admissions, hearing, not all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Item two, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from Jennifer Aquino, Assistant Town Engineer, to waive the bid for permanent pavement patches on call services and award the contract to William M. Layden Construction at the 2020 bid price with a 3% increase for FY25.
Hi, good evening. So we are asking for technically as a bid waiver to award the paving on-call contract to William Layden Construction. They've been our on-call paving contractor for a number of years. Under this current pricing and bid that we're working under is pricing back to fiscal 2020. They've agreed to increase their pricing since then at no increase. They reached out to us this year and are interested in extending their contract once again and have asked for, you know, a minimal contract increase of 3%. I provide you some backup information along with the letter of request comparing, you know, asphalt prices at the beginning of our bid to bid pricing or asphalt pricing for today. You know, we believe that this is the best route for us to go because as you can see with the information provided, there's been a significant increase in asphalt prices since fiscal 20. And we believe that if we do go out, back out for a rebid, that the prices will significantly increase from what we have here. So the new bid pricing would be as listed on the letter for fiscal 25 for the asphalt patching, curbing, asphalt sidewalks, and aprons.
Okay. Move it?
I'll move it.
All right, move it, I'll second it. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item four, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from Brian Devlin Superintendent. Oh, sorry. Item three, to receive a report from Jennifer Aquino, Assistant Engineer for Emergency Work, to replace the existing by two minutes concrete island on Route 139.
So incorporated into the letter that we've submitted along with the request is sort of a history of what transpired for this particular project. Initially, in February of this year, we solicited pricing from our three on-call contractors to give us pricing to replace the island at 139 at Route 1. We submitted the package to DOT. The package was rejected and they've requested some modifications be made to that. And when they rejected it, which was a number of weeks later from when we asked for the pricing, they let us know that paving of 139 was going to start in two weeks and that we had to finish that work before then, or we would be required to do a significant restoration of that if we were able to do the work afterwards. Given those circumstances, we reached back out to the contractors to see, one, if any of them were able to meet that timeline, and two, what the modification to the pricing would be based on DOT's requirements at the time of what we received back from them. William Layden Construction, which was originally the lower bid for the original solicitation, was able to meet the timeline and provided us pricing that was lower than the original price, but we had to procure the granite curbing directly from the supplier. So given those circumstances, we engaged William Layden Construction in the project, was able to complete it actually two days before the paving project started on 139. It's now completed and the report, you know, is submitted to you at this time.
I guess my only question is, is how did this, what made this the emergency part if they were already a little bitter?
Well, because the nature of the work that they were going to be undertaking was different than the original quoted amount that they provided us, and there was an item in what DOT was requesting that's not in our bid. It's technically an item that's outside of the bid.
And the timeline didn't allow you to do anything else?
Timeline didn't. It was either do it within that two week or we weren't going to be able to do it again.
Yep. That's all I have. I'll move it.
All right, so moves a second to accept the report. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item four, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from Brian Devlin Superintendent, Waste Water Treatment Facility, to award the contract for the replacement of fine bubble aeration diffuser system to Kovacs Construction Corporation in the amount of $98,273. Brian?
Yes, we went out to bid for the work. We supplied the material. We have the material on site. And we went out to bid. We had a lower bid or they were out of Missouri. I checked what, we had J.K. Mara Engineering Firm put the bid package together for us. I checked with them and they never used this company out of Missouri. And I called the company up and asked questions and they never did work over in this area before. And my question, Kovacs, that's the second lowest bidder, they're on, they must have did 10, 15 projects for us in the past. They're on a project now, they're very good, and they done diffusers in the past for us. So that's why I would like to request them to do the work for us if I can.
The price ranges were kind of astonishing on this from the low of 49 to what, 240, 250?
And then Nickerson's a huge company, the highest bidder there. And the company is like 1,170 miles away from Missouri. And my question is, how would they come back and repair something? That was my, and the price was so low, I don't know how he would even make any money.
I get it, thanks. I'll move it.
All right, it's been moved, I'll second it. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Item five, to consider and appropriate approve a recommendation from the Solid Waste Management Commission to extend the Thimble Island Collection Contract between the Town of Branford and Thimble Island Ferry Company LLC for an additional year at effect of July 1, 2024 in the amount of $20,000. Paul, thank you. I saw you. Hello. What do you have to report to?
At last evening, Solid Waste Management Commission, the special meeting, the board, the commission approved, recommended the acceptance of the offer from Fisher's Island Ferry Company for ongoing trash and recycling collection from the Thimble Islands. We had, period. We had requested bids through an RFP process. We got no bids. So the current provider has graciously offered to extend his contract, which was an extension of a previous multi-year contract. The offer increases the price to $20,000 a year, which is how much we had included in the fiscal 24, 25 budget for the task. And it is an increase over prior years, but the prior years were based on a bid that was made in probably 2021. So commission recommends the replacement contract with the unbid offer, and we recommend and we've submitted a bid waiver recommendation to the Office of First Selectment, to the best of my knowledge.
I would just like to add to that, and thank you for calling a meeting and making that offer. As Paul had mentioned, we did go out to bid, we received no bids for that work. The current Thimble Island Ferry Company, who is the current contract holder, gave us, gave the town sufficient notice that they were not going, did not, were not, didn't anticipate being able to continue this work because it's a family-run business and a couple of the sons are going off to school. So they would not be able to complete their, the season. When we did not receive any bids, we asked if there's any way to extend it as, while we, you know, came up with an alternative plan. The owner did, you know, come back and said he would carry it out for the rest of the season. There is a price increase, but now he's rather relying on family labor. Has to go out and employ some additional employees to finish this task. The justification for the increase, overall, I think the current contract is at 14.5 or 15? It's about a $5,000.
I think it's 14.5.
14, yeah, 14, yeah, 14, 675. So, you know, dollar wise, it's not a significant increase, but it is a needed task that needs to be done.
And they're going to use outside labor.
Outside labor, yes. So I think it's justified.
And it will cover not just this year, but into next season as the contract typically would.
Right. So it'll expire June 30th, 2025. That's important to note. Thank you. All right, any questions?
There's no options.
Yeah.
I'll move it.
All right. Well, the second it.
The only option's bad, so no.
The option would be to do a rebate.
All right, it's been moved, second, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say that they provide a valuable service and do a very good job. So the Islanders appreciate the work that the Smith boys do.
All right, well, good to hear. Thank you. All right, item six, appointments. Academy on the Green, First Congregational Church Representative Susan Winkle, term to expire January 30th, 2026.
Move it.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Conservation Environment Commission Lauren Rotolo, to fill a vacancy left by Lana Lujie, term to expire July 31st, 2028.
Move it.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Reappointments. Conservation and Environmental Commission Cynthia Jasek, Heather Wells Sweeney, Joshua Greenberg, terms to expire July 31st, 2027.
Move it.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Green Committee Patricia Sanders and Don Gentile, terms to expire May 31st, 2027.
Move it.
Second that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Young's Pond Commission Jeffrey Hoots, term to expire April 30th, 2027, and Paul Blackstone, term to expire April 30th, 2028.
Move it.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item eight, to consider and if appropriate approve a proclamation designating the week of June 2nd, 2024 as Gun Violence Awareness Week. Whereas 219 people were killed with firearms in Connecticut during 2023, the third highest number of gun deaths in more than a decade. And whereas firearms are the second leading cause of suicide in Connecticut and account for half of all gun deaths in our state. And whereas interpersonal gun violence in urban centers accounts for the majority of gun homicides in Connecticut and disproportionately harms communities of color. And whereas firearms are now the leading cause of death of children and teens in the U.S., surpassing motor vehicle accidents. And whereas health experts include the American Public Health Association, the American Medical Association, and the American Academy of Pediatrics have declared gun violence a public health crisis. And whereas exposure to gun violence can change a child's brain development and lead to short and long-term consequences, including decreased academic performance, chronic health problems, substance abuse, and unstable employment. And whereas pervasive crimes, crisis response drills needed to prepare students in the case of a school shooting create emotional harm. And whereas more than 80% of children, child firearm suicides use a gun belonging to a family member, and 3/4 of school shooters obtain a gun they use from their home or the home of a relative. And whereas abused women are five times more likely to be killed if the partner owns a firearm, and nearly 1 million women have reported being shot by an abuser. And whereas 6 out of 10 firearms recovered at crime scenes in Connecticut in 2022 came from out of state, all from states with weaker gun regulations than ours. And whereas nationally in 2021, police recovered more than 19,000 untraceable ghost guns that are preferred by criminals, a tenfold increase from 2016. And whereas this June 2nd would have been the 27th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, a teen who was shot and killed as an innocent bystander in the park in Chicago following in Hadiya's friends, following which Hadiya's friends chose to wear orange on her birthday because hunters wear the color orange to protect themselves. And whereas by joining together, we can call attention to this public health crisis and signal our commitment to reducing gun violence in all its forms. Now therefore, the Board of Selectmen hereby declare the week of June 2nd, 2024 Gun Violence Awareness Week in the Town of Branford. Can I get a motion to?
Motion to approve.
And I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item nine, correspondence, any, no correspondence? Item 10, any other business? Any other business? Sure.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Ms. Osgo, I wonder if you could tell me, do you have a vision for Branford?
A vision for Branford?
Yes.
Yes.
And what might that be?
My vision for Branford is that it continue to be a great community that many are proud to be, call home, their hometown. Those who come to Branford, continue to closely and quickly build a bond to this community, are involved in the community. It's a, and it's a community that continues to, in the best we can, address the needs of our fellow residents. That's my vision for Branford.
Does that vision, does that vision include a new public works that's been promised since before you were elected to the office?
The, in terms of the public works facility?
Yes.
And, no, I'm going to answer that. So in terms of, you say a new, so I assume you mean a new constructed facility other than what they're operating out of. I do not see that in the near future. I actually, as one who is here as a member of the RTM, when the, this project was going forward, my concern at that time was to not having a plan for public works and moving forward and having it languish out there. And actually, I will say, and I've addressed this many times on the record, I was concerned, you know, questioned if it was in the best interest of the town to lease a facility. However, I can say it has actually been a very good deal for the town. It's a location that's well-suited for the department in terms of response. It's a, an arrangement that has certainly been, in terms of a taxpayer standpoint, I think, a benefit to the taxpayer other than in this current lease arrangement. However, are there some deficiencies with the site and with the building that need to be addressed in long-term? Absolutely.
And how long?
And, excuse me, I'm answering your question. So I have had, you know, reached out actually several times to the, the current owner of the property. It's important to note, it has changed hands since we've taken ownership of the property. I have reached out to the current representative, expressed our desire to continue this arrangement. However, we would like to address certain needs of the department and, and they're aware of that from all communications that I've had with them, mostly verbal. They would like to continue the arrangement as well and are interested in accommodating the town and whatever that, you know, those improvements may be. But that has yet to move forward. I've had, for various reasons, we have not been able to connect and finalize or really even fully vet what those changes would be. As I said, with the department itself, you know, in terms of the facility, I, there are some deficiencies with it. However, it does meet the department's needs. As somebody who, as you know, before I took this role as First Selectman, I was in, in construction and somebody who performed similar work, as you may see our Public Works Department performing, I've always felt strongly in supporting the department in training, equipment, tools, and ensuring that they have adequate equipment to do the job. I think the Town of Branford over the last few, you know, few years has made, you know, great investments in, in all of those areas. And I'm actually quite proud of the department in terms of the work that they've undertaken, undertaken these last, under the leadership of Gary Zalinski. But I give credit, and I'm sure Gary would too, to the team that's in place throughout the department in really expanding the roles and the responsibility that they undertake in taking ownership from everything from, you know, addressing the, you know, a pothole to drainage systems, to parks, to gardens. They are really, have really broadened in terms of what they undertake. And I think in terms of, as I was mentioning, the investments that we've made in equipment, vehicles, trucks, education, training, I believe the, the crews have really embraced that, from what I've seen, and, you know, have stepped up to deliver for the people of Branford.
So you say that you see that there are some shortcomings on that facility. What are there?
I think additional access into the building primarily is one. And, you know, long-term, if we had better office space, and there's some others, but that's really for.
It's not very centrally located either.
It's going to be hard to, you're not going to set, well, it is accessible to many areas of town. And again, it's not centrally located where it was here today. Historically, you know, I'm sure you and I are familiar with when it was over here on this site, in this garage, and it was probably centrally located to this end of town. But, you know, this is a, this is a far, far drive to Stony Creek from this area. So, you know, you're always going to have those distances.
Not as far a drive as it is to Dominican Road.
And.
Not as far as Lake Salt, the drive to Lake Saltonstall, right? So I mean.
But let's just be.
It's not, I mean, you've got to admit, it's not centrally located.
Well, that's part of the challenge, and I think not only yourself, but the previous administration had found, right? The, the location for, citing a public works, that type of activity is a difficult task. And, and that was a challenge going back to when, when it was first being, this building was first being contemplated, is where to cite public works. There was, there was other locations that were identified, there was, but there was always challenges, whether it was cost.
That position was supposed to be stopgap. And here we are, 12 years, 13 years, whatever it is, later, and it's, and it's not stopgap. It's now become a permanent fixture with us renting it and with inadequacies that you've, you've admitted to. And, and so, you know, it's concern, that's all. Next question.
Well, let me just finish it because your comment regarding it being a stopgap, I, and I started my comments when I was initially concerned for those, those same things. This is, and this is just a stopgap location and we should have a long-term plan. However, however, I think it's important to note, it's important to note, I mean, any, any location you're going to move to, there's always going to be something that's going to be, you know, less than ideal. There are some changes you want, I mean, I bet you even on this brand-new beautiful building, facility, if the, the site was a little bit different, they may have designed things a little differently. Those challenges exist with any project, whether it's a school, a firehouse, or public works. The, in terms of being a stopgap, yes, that initially was, was supposed to be a temporary location. Let's move on. As I was saying, where the, if you, where the department has gone, and it certainly has not hindered the department in any way from expanding and improving what they do day in and day out. So I think a lot of credit goes to the.
You admit that, you admit that they do a great job. I think they deserve a great facility.
Yeah.
That's my opinion on it. Does this, does this vision of Branford include anything to do with Eastern Industrial Road? At least half of your term, you've been here in as a First Selectman now for what? This is your 11th year?
Mm-hmm.
And so since at least 2019, money has been set aside to address the Eastern Industrial Road thing. And as far as I can see, no progress has been made on that. And further money was, was allocated to that a couple of years later by the state and still no money. I don't see any progress on it. Now, maybe there's something happening, but boy, you know, if you go down that road and people who shop, I stop and shop, or those people who go to the truck stop, it's, it's a treacherous road to go down. And it's, I just don't see any progress in it. Can you tell me where that's, where that project's going?
Yeah, so it was, initially some money was allocated in, it's 2019, that may be correct, from the town. But since that time, we then went and applied for federal funds. It wasn't state funds, it was federal funds. Congressman Delores, the community grant funding, we received 2 point, I think it was 2.75 million for that project.
Plus the million that you, a million.
No, no.
Plus that the town already gave you, or gave toward that project, right? So all told, it was almost, what, four and a half million?
No, so that's, we were not going to, if, if, it wasn't in addition to, we were seeking, when we were seeking the funding, we were seeking the funding to do the project with federal funds. What would happen in that case, if the project moves forward and we have, if we have adequate funds, or not all, we would either repurpose those dollars or deauthorize the authorization. So the two-point, you know, at the time was looking to address the entire project. I will also just, it's important to note, there's two things. And again, this is also a frustration with myself, engineering, in terms of the delays with this project going through design. And it requires outside design work to take place. But also keep in mind, when that, the first notice of award was made and we received, that we were going to, those dollars were not available, I want to say it was, it was probably close to a year later. So that in itself was another delay that was taken. It got tied up in the, with the federal government. We got the, we were, noticed that we were going to be one of the recipients. However, as, I'm sure you follow what's happening oftentimes in Washington, budgets are not approved, there's delay, and those, those funding sources have to wait until they're funded. So it was quite some time after that award, where, notice, where we were actually, the money was freed up in the federal government.
Well, now you have, now the money is here, so what?
And I just told you.
What's going on going forward?
Yeah, so we have an engineer that's doing some design work. That's where it stands.
Is this engineer going to have this done sometime within, say, my great-grandkid's lifetime?
I don't know.
I mean, it's just, it's ridiculously slow.
All right.
What is, talking about, further about your vision, what is your vision for the old post office, the old Board of Ed building on corner of Mono East and Main Street?
The, the use of that building, as you know, has not been decided. But my vision is for it to be something that truly contributes to the, the economic vitality, vibrancy of the Town of Branford as a whole, not only the immediate area. vibrancy of the, the town of Branford as a whole, not only the immediate area. I think it is a Keystone Building property that has, there's a lot of potential there, but yet, right now, so that's my vision for the property.
You say, you say.
So, it's not going to be the registrar or voter's office. I know that you had asked me one time. It's, it won't be a town department. I, that's not my vision for it.
So, you want to, you want to make this, put this into private hands again?
I, I believe ultimately what the arrangement is, is still, it has to be vetted out. There's, I'm not, you know, the, unilaterally cannot make that decision.
Who else is making that with you?
Well, when we go through it, it'll have to go through the process, and ultimately, if we were to enter into an arrangement, whether it's a lease arrangement, a sale arrangement, or entertain that, that would have to go through the RTM, per ordinance.
Okay, and that likewise apply to the old scene you said, as you said.
Correct.
Okay. What are your plans for Rogers Street? Paving it.
Yeah.
Have you driven down Rogers Street lately? You still have shocks?
Yeah.
Oh, how shocking.
Okay, so, that road will be, obviously is in repair, it needs repaving, however, there's other work that needs to be done in terms of some engineering work, I believe, and I was just talking to the public works director, and plus some removals of some gutters that are under the pavement.
Well, what's the delay on that, then?
Well, there's, it's just not in the area that we're doing right now. As you know, we just completed a very extensive paving project in the Indian Eck area, through Indian Eck Avenue, many of the side streets. That is, you know, is still underway, I shouldn't say finished up, there's still work to be done, but the bulk of the paving work is done. And that was the area that was being concentrated on, on this paving round. There is a, but that certainly is a, an identified project and will be taken care of.
And what about the central revitalization? What's, where's, where is that at this point?
So, there's some state review that has to take place before they give us the notice to proceed, as well as we have some form that was finalized to get the, to, all the butters, because some of the work will be taking place within there, up against their buildings and there. So, we need to get final sign-off on that, and that form was just finalized through the engineering department.
So, what's the timeline for that?
It's, as I said, it's in the state's hands now.
Yeah, well, they must give you some type of an idea.
No.
They just say, okay.
We send it up there.
Maybe 30 years from now, they'll do it. I mean, you must have some idea, right?
So, ideally, we would like to have it this, this summer and go out to bid, but no, we don't have, there's no notice where, okay, when we submit it to DOT or go through that process where they'll say, oh, this will be turned around in 30 days, 60 days? No, that notification does not come.
One other thing, I understand that the Police Department is coming to this building, and this is going to be before the election. Is this correct?
The schedule has not been finalized.
If it is before the election, is there any idea where you would behold an election for the fourth district, which is the largest district in town?
Yeah, so, the, the current registrars, the current registrars and voters are, are considering locations now, and making contingency plans, or making contingency plans if they have to make that move.
Could, could that not be delayed until after the, the November election? As you can, as you might imagine, this is perhaps the most important election we've had in our lifetimes. And to move the largest district voting place is going to create more chaos than I think is necessary for, you know, the, the townspeople and those people who are voters, you would have to notify every single one of those persons by letter. That's going to increase a lot of work for the department. And I think if you can just delay this, what's the target date for the Police Department to move in here?
Yeah, as I said, they're finalizing the schedule, so that, that question will be answered.
Yeah, we don't want that after the fact, though, right? I mean, if they say, well, this is the final thing, and then now you, now you have no wiggle room, right? So, I mean, at some point, I, I think.
Yeah, we're working with the register.
That discussion should be had.
The discussion is being had, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Tracy Everson, RTM Fifth District. You cruised right through the Gun Violence Awareness Proclamation, and I appreciate that you did pass it, as you have in the last two years as well. It's really important to raise this issue, just to help raise awareness about the reality of how gun violence affects all of us, and help inspire our fellow citizens to action. And so, it's great that Branford will be joining other communities in the state in recognition of this week. So, thank you.
Yeah. If anybody is interested in the proclamation, I hope, as I said, I cruised through it. I, I hope I was clear and people heard it.
You were, but I just.
Okay.
Through you, you processed, you went right to.
The next one? Okay, all right. So, I'll give you the opportunity to, thank you for, I know we've adopted the last couple of years.
Yes.
The, and if, I was going to say, anybody interested in that proclamation is attached to the, it'll be filed with the minutes, correct? And was it part of the agenda as well, right? Or no?
No.
No, okay, it'll be with the, it'll be with the minutes, so. All right, any other business? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.